A meeting to order. We'll start by making the announcement that this meeting is being taped by Area 58. Next would be if you'd join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Approve all of the agenda. Any changes from the board?
It looks good.
Let's see. Minutes. Does anyone want to move a minute?
I'm getting there. Yeah, yeah. We approve the following selected minutes. Regular session November 18th, 2022. Regular session December 13th, 2022.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed? Unanimous? Warrants and commitments?
I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vendor warrant number 91 for $35,705.68. School warrant number 92 for $600,906.61. Ambulance commitments from March 20, 2023 to March 26, 2023 for $64,195.45. Ambulance commitments from March 27, 2023 to April 2, 2023 for $4,757.36.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed?
I move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 93 for $407,350.83. Vendor warrant number 94 for $117,281.54. Mobile home park fee number four for $5,148.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve unanimously. Unanimous?
I move to approve the payments of the following selected bills. Sand and gravel involving. John F. Dolan Esquire for $900. Irelx Incorporated doing business as Lexxex Nexus for $78. W Mason for $388.67. Brooks &amp; Durandis for $18,886.68. That's it.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed? Unanimous? Any discussions on vacation carryover requests? So, are these that we have to approve? Is that how that works?
The second one, yes. The first one is just informing you that you can vote to approve it.
But that's the highest.
The highest.
So, we have a request from the Highway Department to carry over 40 hours of vacation for five of his men, and we are just...
You can vote to approve it.
So, do we have a motion to approve it?
Do we want to ask Steve for perfect timing?
Let's go like the fourth.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll make the motion to approve the carryover. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Your guys' carryover, anything you want to tell us?
Oh, no. They usually, if they haven't had so much time, they take the carryover to next year.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor of the vacation carryover request from the Highway Department say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We have a request from the accountant to carry over 80 hours to fiscal year 24. And her explanation is she's been unable to use the vacation because of the work that she's been doing in the last year. I would hardly endorse that, so I would be glad to make that motion.
I would be glad to second it.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? No. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed? Unanimous? Vote on the diesel contract. Mr. Hayward.
Say aye. This is a carryover, and they'll give us a new price. Hopefully, it's going to be the same. If it's too high, we can go back up to bid.
So, let's see. We will be approving, let's see, Dennis K. Burke for delivery of premium unleaded gasoline and diesel fuel for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, and for two years thereafter at the discretion of the town.
So, that was already approved. You'd be approving for July 1st, 23 through June 30th, 23.
Okay. July 1st, 23 through June 20, 23. Got it. Okay. I'll make that motion. Any... Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the gasoline and diesel fuel? Nope. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed? Unanimous? Is there anybody here from the Republican Town Committee? Are we supposed to do three or one?
So, the way it's written is when there's an open seat, you ask the... So, for instance, this would be the Republican seat on the Board of Registars. So, they submit three names, three recommendations to you, and you would choose one to fill the seat on the Board of Registars.
On the Board of Registars?
Right.
Okay. All right. And this is a one-year appointment or...
I believe it's three.
It's three years.
Okay.
Okay. So, the three recommendations from the Republican Town Committee?
Yeah. John Chaloi is on the chair, so he submitted the three names, but he can't serve in that capacity because he's the chair, so it would have to be the other two. I think that was unbeknownst to him, that he couldn't submit his own name.
So, we have to choose between two?
You can choose either Gordon Andrews or Summer. I don't think... Me and Sue don't think that John Chaloi can sit on the Board of Registars since he's the chair of the Republican Town Committee.
Okay. So, we have to pick between Gordon Andrews and Summer Schmoll. Anybody on the board have a preference?
There, I know they're both, you know, they're both passionate Republicans, and yeah, I think both for that capacity would be fine. Splitting hairs.
Any comments? No. I don't know which to do. They're both on the school committee, both have other jobs. I'll move that we appoint Summer Schmoll.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed? Unanimous? And that's just because I had to pick one.
One or two.
Okay. Can you tell me?
So, this is going to take some time. Do you want to do this one? It doesn't matter. Whatever you prefer, but this will probably take about a half hour.
All right. Why don't we skip over that for now and come back to another one. Speed limit discussion, Chief Shaves and Steve Hayward, and I see Mr. Corrigan's here. So, Mr. Corrigan has asked us to consider some changes to the speed limits on Route 106 through here. I don't really know what the process is. My memory from years ago was that we had to have some sort of state authority to do that, but we'll leave it up to you two guys can advise us.
Basically, that's exactly what it is. You can't just go change the speed limits, especially on 106 or any numbered road. We might take care of it, but it's still a state road. So, we have to have studies done and all that good stuff.
What's the process for it if we decided that we wanted to follow through with it?
Basically, what all the towns are doing now, which I incorporated off the town, doesn't want to do is go to the 25 throughout the town unless posted, so you don't have to keep all the changes signed. But I don't know too many people that want to be 25.
Throughout the whole Route 106 or...
No, that would be numbered. They already have the speed limit. If it's not posted speed limit, it's 25. So, it will be a universal speed limit in town. So, you have signs at each entry point into the town, like almost like Kingston has, that the speed limit in Halifax will be 25 miles an hour unless posted. So, everybody would be aware that once they've entered Halifax, there's supposed to be a 25 miles an hour. I believe, speaking with Steve, it was brought up at an annual town meeting a few years back, and it was ordered down. So, I know that we... So, we just recently had the radar trail around my station. It was the first time because of the weather, and the 85th percentile for the vehicles that traveled through there was 41 miles an hour. So, the speed limit there is 35, 85th percentile is 41. The issue with creating, you know, asking the state to do a study is they could actually tell us your speed's too low. So, it's kind of, you know, kind of the balancing act we have to have. So, obviously, we can look at that, but like Steve says, in the state numbered highways, they control the kind of the speed numbers. We just can't put up signs wherever they would have.
Based on who is through here, we would be able to ask the state if they wanted to check it, but...
I think so. I think they have a speed study.
Mr. Slife. Just say who you are, so...
Michael Slife, 60 Paradise. When we did the Traffic Safety Committee, I believe Bob and Ed were on it. You get planning council to come in and do the study, do the numbers on the street, the traffic counts, and they can... Old Colony Planning Council?
Yes.
So, they do these studies on a request.
They did one for Pine Street. So, we have actual results of that.
Yep. I don't think it's any additional cost to the town.
Okay.
So, that'd be my first place to...
Ms. Dan.
Kathleen Berry, 34 Highland Circle. I was recently looking at the West Bridgewater Town page, and I know that the study was already done on 106, was suggestions. Perhaps we go back and look at that study to see if they already have made suggestions for a speed limit. I know that they already made suggestions about stop signs and traffic lights.
Are you talking about the most recent one or the one 10 years ago?
I don't remember the date on it.
Because they are scheduled to do another entire study on 106, but there was one that was published, I think, in 2010, where they made a bunch of recommendations, which I don't know what happened, you know, with the recommendations, but I think it's scheduled to happen on the study. We might want to reach each other.
Well, maybe we can just contact Old Colony. We have questions about it and see what we can do on it.
Sure. Okay. No discussion about it? I think, I know there have been residents that are concerned where 106 is, you know, getting built up with businesses. So, I wouldn't be opposed to slowing things down in that business area, but we just have to make sure that, you know, we're not opening a can of worms with setting a townwide speed limit. So, I would two before the OCPC recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, I have some of the recommendations here. Actually, this was done in 2017, 2019. So, it mentions the Halifax Elementary School Road Safety Audit, and then some other stuff. And it does recommend pedestrian crossing signs, removing no passing zone signage, a bunch of other things. Again, I don't know. It's not that also who might...
Do we still have a Traffic Safety Committee?
Yeah, we just, yeah, we just, it was Corrigan, was it a couple months ago?
I remember.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
See you soon. That's John mine.
That committee might be the best reference for us to the board.
Does anybody remember how the committee was formed?
How?
Why?
Well, I do. Yeah, I do. I absolutely do because of that pedestrian fatality crossing the street.
Nice young boy was hit by a car. He was walking across the street with his bikes, with his dad, and I was like, okay. I was on wake-up calls.
Okay. So, unless the board has any other ideas or thoughts, I guess we'll have ask OCPC for their ideas and also to just follow up with Traffic Study Committee and see what we can do.
Yeah.
Okay. I got 6:15.
Yes.
So, we have an appointment here. Mr. Corrigan.
According to the overview that I have in my hand, in 2016, the legislature passed section 193 and 194 of chapter 218 of the Acts of 2016 to create two new sections of MLG MGL 90517C. Section 193 allows a municipality to opt into section 17C, chapter 90 of the MGL, thereby reducing statutory speed limits from 30 to 25 miles an hour on any and all or town-owned roadways within a thickly settled or business district. The legislation also requires cities and towns to notify mass duty of these changes. So, the town has the right to take this business district and drop it down to 25 without even notifying the Department of Transportation until after they have done it, right here and running. Okay? Section 194, if you're going to drop the speed limit down to 20, you have to have a survey done ahead of time. But on section 193, you do not need a survey to change this business district, which is a hazard to the citizens of Halifax with all the crisscrossing and the building up on this road. You can change that down to 25 miles an hour if you so determine it should be done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think highways are there and police chief are aware of that, and they're telling us something different, so we're going to have to at least look into it a little bit further and let you know if there's anything we can do in that regard. But they... My memory is it's a state road, a numbered road. We have difficulty controlling it, and that's what Mr. Hayward says and Chief Shaves, so we'll see how that goes. But it's not out of the question. It's just a matter of getting along. Okay. So, any other comments on this before we move on? No. All right. So, let's talk, let's go to our appointment. Jeremy Gillespie's appointment to the zoning bylaw review committee. Mr. Gillespie is here. Would you like to talk to us a little bit about your interest in this and so on?
Yeah, so I haven't read every single page of it and every single zoning bylaw, but I've read a lot of it. I've also read a lot of the previous bylaw review committees work. And I think that there's definitely some areas of improvement that can be made to it. Some of them pulled it overly complicated. I think bad zoning can equal bad growth and bad towns eventually. So, when I looked at some of the stuff, it was counterproductive. It was written in a time when things were a little bit different. Some of them are old, you know, bylaws, especially about parking and stuff like that. I found that kind of ridiculous, like why do we have to have this huge space behind long racks of empty space to sit in there, you know, because of parking requirements and stuff? So, I just see a lot of things in there that could be simplified, and then things that need to be addressed. And as far as enforcement, you know, there seems to be some lack of understanding there. But it's, mostly it's an easy thing to do.
Okay. So, this committee... This committee is meant to review our bylaws, our zoning bylaws. It's not going to take any direct action other than recommendations.
Yes.
And are you, you're comfortable in a committee setting? Most of the time in a committee setting, you need to do a lot of compromise and, you know, listen to what everybody else has to say and come up with what your group thinks is the best suggestions for Halifax. So, that would be something that you'd be comfortable doing?
Yes.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah. So, I know, Jeremy, you're a very passionate guy, and I appreciate that, especially around the environment and stuff in the town. And just kind of tailing on what Mr. Bruno said, your willingness to be open-minded, you know? I think some of the best committees are committees made up of people that don't all think the same.
Right.
You know, so you'd be open to, I guess, other takes on different issues and other ideas and kind of working together to come to some sort of consensus.
Can't be against everything all the time.
Okay.
Things just have to make sense and be balanced.
Okay. We got the nail on the head on that one. How many spaces are open on that committee? Do you know?
We have one at large.
One at large.
And one planning representative.
So, you are still lacking a planning board person?
Yes, they have one representative.
Okay.
We put it up, and nobody wanted to see.
Say again?
We put it up for a vote at the planning board meeting, and nobody wanted to see it.
Okay.
So, we were going to see that maybe another at large.
All right. Well, we have an election coming up, too, and maybe that'll change things. Who knows? But possibly. But so, if Mr. Gillespie's appointed, then there's one open space on there, and that is the planning board representative?
As it is now, yes.
Okay. Are you on that committee or not?
I am.
You are. Is it, it's meeting and continuing and so on?
We haven't been able to get a quorum in a few months.
Okay. And if he's appointed, would that give you a quorum?
Hopefully.
Okay.
It depends on how it shows up.
All right. Do you have any suggestions, comments, since we're talking about this right now? Recommendations one way or another?
No, I like that he has passion.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussions, comments?
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Alan Diaz, Snow Street. I did send a letter to the board.
You did?
Suggesting that the board not appoint Mr. Gillespie based on his Facebook post, his filing of anonymous complaints to DEP and Conservation Commission. And I don't know that that type of action would be helpful for the town, especially to his bylaws. And that's my position. I sent a file to the post. I'm not a Facebook person, so that stuff would break my attention. But I think we have enough of Facebook with our last elections, and I think that there should be some other good qualified candidates. I'll go. End that message.
Thank you.
Speak to that comment? I'd like to speak to that comment.
One at a time. This is a world meeting. They only do things in a formal way, which means you have to wait till October. Okay? All right. So, Mr. Goodman has his hand up.
Steve Goodman, 24th Ave, Concorde Commission. I can only speak to one portion of that. I don't really look at Facebook all that much as well. I do share quite a few things I'm sure some people in tune are aware. Mr. Gillespie, to my knowledge, as a member of the Conservation Commission, has never filed an anonymous complaint. Every complaint he's brought to the attention of all of us, because we have our official emails, and that's where he sends them, is he's signed his name to it. I can't comment to the other things, but as I said, as far as I know, he's signed his name to everything that he sends to the Conservation Commission. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
I don't want someone's reputation to be sold out.
Mrs. Truman.
I have the same.
Oh, I thought you were using here. Okay. Mr. Gillespie, again, talk to us, don't talk to them.
So, I didn't file that complaint anonymously, and that's public record, and it's on video that I didn't file it anonymously. That's all I have to say.
Okay. I mean, I hate to do this, but exactly. Oh, you're Mr. Corrigan as an example. He's a very passionate man about his, and he's not shy about telling us when we're wrong and when he thinks we're wrong. And I don't have a problem with that. I think that's a good thing. The important part of this committee, this committee serves a useful purpose in terms of like a study of what we're doing, and hopefully will push us forward to a better community on the zoning end of things.
Right.
And as long as you can assure us, we're asking you to do, that you go in there with an open mind, not with any sort of agenda, and that you will listen to, you know, all the possibilities, examine all the possibilities, and then do what you think is best for Halifax. I think that's all we can ask of you.
Right. That's what I want.
Yeah, I learned very quick that ambition to talking, you have to do a lot of listening on these boards and committees. So, you know, you're willing to listen and consider other opposing opinions.
Absolutely. I'm not the expert on zoning. I don't even live in Halifax. I'm really ambitious.
All right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further comments? We have a motion to appoint Mr. Gillespie.
So, move it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Good luck. Keep us up to date on what you're doing. We'd like your model. We do have another one coming up, an issue coming up anyway. We give it...
6:25, yeah.
Oh, 6:25. Is Ms. Santos here? No. We can take it up for that, I suppose. So, we have a live entertainment permit application from...
Just lame.
She's lame. Thank you. Santos from Cherry Street, and she wants to, on April 15th, which is this weekend, have a birthday party from once live entertainment, one to eight. Type of entertainment is live music. Expected 75 plus. Ms. Santos will be in charge in the parking plan parked in her yard, and some of the other cars will be on the street. This has been reviewed by the fire chief, police chief, and board of health, and they've all okayed it. So, any discussion from the board?
No, looks good.
Okay. We have anybody here to speak to this? Is that right?
I did a site inspection because there's some neighborhood issues going on there. Everything looks fine. Spoke with Mr. Santos at length. The live music consists of a guitar player and somebody else on a wind instrument because the daughter is very passionate about music. It's a mutual party. It's actually a dual party for his birthday and the child's birthday. There's plenty of parking on their property on either side. I don't even think they're going to need the park on Cherry Street. So, I don't have any issue with it. It's 8 o'clock in the afternoon, in the evening. I informed my officers to, you know, that they potentially might get a call there once they see the activity, but it's been ongoing then. You know, recent ongoing thing. It's been...
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? So, we have a motion to approve the live entertainment permit.
So, move it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? All right. The next thing we have is 6:30, and we have two minutes for that. Let me do some... Yeah, let me do an update here so while we're doing this. And so, this is on, the board will indulge me here for one minute. So, this is on the MBTA Action Plan. So, just to refresh our memories, the state about two years ago passed a law regarding what they call MBTA communities, which lucky for us were one, where they are trying to change, or force us to change our zoning to add significant amount of multifamily housing. I don't have any problem with multifamily housing, and I think we do need some in Halifax. What I do have a problem with is the overreach of the state government on this project. So, I drafted a letter to see if the board approves, which I would recommend that we send to our representatives, both Ms. Lenatra and Mr. Cutler, and the state senator, Mr. Brady. And I would also say that we should probably just circulate this to the surrounding towns so that they know what we're doing. I've heard some things on the radio that some of the other towns have as many issues with this as we do. So, this is, and I want to read it out loud here just so we all know what's going on. So, this is to each of them. Same line. "We are writing to address our serious reservations with the multifamily zoning requirements for MBTA communities, also known as section 3A, MGL, chapter 40A. In our opinion, this law enacted within the last couple of years is an example of overreach by state government, which will result in great harm to communities such as Halifax. The law, as the newly-elected Attorney General recently wrote, is not only, quote, mandatory, but the Attorney General actually seems to encourage any, quote, outside advocacy group to sue communities who are not in compliance. We have to assume that you, as our representative for our community, did not intend or foresee that the state government would, in a heavy-handed and completely undemocratic manner, force communities like Halifax to knuckle under to advocacy groups when there is absolutely no benefit to be gained by our..." no benefit to be gained by our community. As a matter of fact, the town of Halifax does not have the public infrastructure, staffing, or services to accommodate an additional seven hundred and fifty housing units. As you are likely aware, Halifax is among many struggling municipalities across the Commonwealth with limited revenue and greatly increasing costs. Although the city of Boston may have a housing crisis, we strongly feel that there is no logical reason to force Halifax to comply with this zoning regulation. Moreover, what possible logical or reasonable basis exists for communities that happen to have a train station in their environs or nearby to be burdened with this law? Halifax did not ask to have a train station, the decision to activate the dormant train line in the nineteen nineties was solely a state government decision. If it is true, as the newly elected attorney general stated recently, that this is meant to relieve a quote housing crisis, why is the MBTA train station a necessary link? Why, for example, is this onerous zoning burden not on other communities throughout the Commonwealth, and only targeted towards those with a connection to the MBTA? It's also important to note that this zoning law has caused an uproar in our community. We've held public meetings wherein the opinion of those in attendance was solidly in opposition to the law and its imperious mandates. To date, we have not heard a single voice in favor. We are seeking your assistance collectively to represent the town of Halifax and be the voices of our communities and state government. This law has absolutely zero benefit to Halifax and is likely to cause unnecessary harm. The MBTA zoning law would require that we have zoning which would allow for seven hundred and fifty units within a short distance to the train station. This is in a community with currently only two thousand nine hundred and thirty households, so this would ultimately result in over, in over a twenty-five percent household increase, a number that the town of Halifax cannot effectively absorb. This is irresponsible legislation, and as a community, we are imploring you to do your job to represent Halifax interests. The Board of Selectmen are requesting that you attend a meeting in the near future to give you the opportunity to explain to our residents how this law came to be and what you will do to help Halifax. Please let us know when you might be available. And that would be. So, the board seen my letter?
Yes. I would like to thank the chair and Cody for your work on the letter, I think you guys have the nail on the head, so.
Yeah, me too.
Glad to sign it and, and send it along.
That's great.
Mrs. Truman.
I just wanted to let you know that the MBTA train line is not a requirement anymore in the law, if you look at it, they've been scratching off different parts of it to allow that, other, so it's not even just Halifax, it would be Carver, because Carver's fighting it now too. Marshfield has a huge stance, and I actually have a letter from, I forget who, at the State House, that is absolutely fighting from inside the State House, and I came forward that to you so you can see it.
I think, I'll get to Mr. Schleifer in a minute, but the reason I wrote the letter is because I do see it's, it's a heavy-handed overreach on state government's part, I mean, it's one thing to encourage us to, to look at multifamily housing, that's a good thing. This one here with the attorney general's recent comments, which I thought were outrageous, about mandatory, about how she was going to encourage advocacy groups, not even from the state, to, to sue the town, and how she thinks that if we don't agree with her, it's some sort of discrimination, which is completely ridiculous, but that's what the articles had said. And so I think the only way we can really address this, other than just crossing our arms and refusing to do it, which is going to cause problems, is to bring our representatives in, that's what their job is, you know, their job's not to show up on Facebook every other day saying, you know, I went to an Eagle Scout ceremony, or, you know, I just got appointed to this committee or that committee, their job's to look out for us, and I think we need to put the, put the heat on a little bit, I like our reps, I like our state senator, I don't have any problem with them, but it's time that they did their work, so.
And to tail on that too, John, I do think they'll be receptive, and I'm glad that we're giving them the chance to come here and, and let us know what their thoughts are, because they're, they're pretty reasonable folks, and, you know, I hope that they, I think, again, the letter is perfect, and I think it sums it up quite nicely.
Mr. Schleifer.
Yeah, it kind of reminds me, a reminiscent of the casino in Middleborough, and I think we would do well to check around the other towns, we're also on the same line if they're...
Yeah, well, that's my, I heard on the radio this morning that Marshfield and Sitewatt are wrestling with this, I don't know exactly what they were doing, but they are, and I know that Middleborough has aggressively been trying not to have to do this, and the only other town aware of is Holden, but I think, I think if we circulate this amongst our local communities and try to get some publicity, that, you know, that, that's the only way we can make a change, you know, it's, it's the democratic way of doing things, you know, that's how it's supposed to be, and I'm a hundred percent in favor of that, so.
You don't see a casino in Middleborough either?
No, and I was involved in that right up to my eyeballs, you're the same thing. So, anyway, so the letter will go out tomorrow, and that's, hopefully we'll take care of, at least get this process moving, so. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can we not spend the town's money on investigating it any further and having special town meetings to save the taxpayers' money since we all don't want it?
We're not spending any time, we got a grant to investigate it.
Yeah, I know, but if you read the grant, then you'll find that there's different things that are in it that are not so great for the town.
I don't think we want to go that, that route yet, just because it is an overreach, as far as I'm concerned, and a burden, and, but that's the way the law is right now, so, until, until we can change it, which we're going to work on, so.
We just want to vote to approve sending the letter.
Oh, so I will make that motion.
I would love to second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, so now we are a little bit late on our parks and commission, I apologize for that, but Mr. Steele is here and Mr. Schleifer here, and, is that it? Oh, oh, Mr. Shindman, that's true, okay. I think the issue here was we have a certain amount of money, I forget how much it is.
Fifty thousand dollars.
And the question we were trying to wrestle with is between you two groups, how do you want to divide it up, and maybe you've already spoken and made up if you want to about it.
I don't know, if I can lead up.
Yeah, we've already, I'm sorry, I mean, we've already come up and talked to the town and submitted a letter on a framework of what we're trying to do, so.
Yeah, we, we found out a couple of months ago that, that this had to be, however the work there, that it had to be in by July first, all the work had to be.
So that was incorrect, the information that was provided to you, we have until twenty twenty-seven to spend that funding.
But the prices are going up, so.
You just gave him more rope.
We won't see him till twenty twenty-seven.
Let's go with the initial July first, because I was on, I was on the hot seat and trying to make sure we got the things that we want to get. I did turn things into, Cody, I, I have, I don't have one for everybody, but you guys, if you haven't seen it yet, these are the things that we would like to, you can just kind of pass along there.
Not to cut you off, Dick, last meeting, we did discuss all of your proposals.
Okay.
And, you know, the board was receptive, and previously, parks had come in and gave us a framework, but not really hard proposals like you had provided, so the board, before making a decision, really was just looking to get more insight from, from parks in particular, I think, but also just, you know.
So what we're, what we're looking at in the recreation department are things that are a little bit more costly in our small budget, that we were looking to try to see we could take care of, and a very small part of that, fifty thousand dollars, if we, we've already, we've already talked about what it is, but it's approximately sixteen grand. Lot of, lot of, lot of work out back, we're working, we want to work on the walking track, which is a real plus to the, to the town, and we, you know, I've been battling that for a few years, we tried to get some money, and I had some work on it, so that's, that's one of the proposals. Couple of proposals are re-cutting some fields back there, baseball, softball, and astroturf, or turf for softball, baseball, used by all residents, and that's pretty much gets us to fifteen, sixteen grand. We then figured that we're not looking to, we understand that the parks is really trying to open up the Mont Ponce, you know, talk to some of the people involved in that, and they really, because they don't have any money, they need, this grant would really help them out in some of the proposals that they hope to wish to bring upon the selectmen, so that's pretty much, that's pretty much our, our plan is, you know, we do have, this work is almost a go situation, that's my only thing, because I thought things had to be done quickly, and so we have people that are talking a bit, and what I need to know once we finish with this meeting is when I can say yes, and how that is paid, if, if we say yes to the things that we want done, and then is that something that has to go through, we submit a bill to the selectmen, and then the selectmen, you know, pay it. Those are pretty much bills that we have in front of us, so, that's pretty much it.
Okay, do we have an agreement between you two as to how?
We haven't met, we haven't met as a commission either to finalize the bills, we've been shagging like, like Dick over here's been shagging stuff to hurry up and get it done by July first, and that's kind of tough, so, I think we would like to operate on the same basis and try to get it all done, try the same thing.
You're talking about sixteen thousand?
Yeah, we're looking at, we're looking at sixteen, I can put a top figure of sixteen grand, anything above that, then we could help, we could certainly help out with that budget, you know, we'll check up until July first.
That would leave the parks around, they're almost thirty.
Yeah.
Thirty-four.
Right.
I have a question. I noticed that there was a placeholder set for five hundred thousand for the ADA, improvements, was any of that involved, parks on that list?
Probably not in this first round.
Oh, I mean, it was a five hundred thousand, it was a half a mil, placeholder.
We have millions of dollars needed improvements that we have to move forward with.
Was any of parks?
Not in that first five hundred thousand dollars.
So, so some of the items we were asking, asking about was pathways, pathways down to the beach, accessibility, do the parking lot, so you can actually have handicap, the in parking, based off the number of people that would be visiting the beach. Crosswalk for the parking lot to the beach over on Route thirty-six, which is, there's no crosswalk, I mean, the access to the beach over there, even though it's a small beach, no one can get access to it legitimately, whether over on the Russell Street, you all know that, so those were kind of the three things that we were looking at to try to help out with, with this fifty, or whatever amounts, you know, the kidding, so that's why I asked, is none of that is considered in there at all?
It's not, no.
So what, what will we have to do? We just have to approve something?
You need to approve projects, and I think, you know, the, the concern that you previously had was you're supportive of parks projects, but we don't have hard numbers, so the board can't approve something without, without figures associated with the project.
But we could approve.
With the ADA, with the ADA project for the half a million.
We're not talking about that, we're talking about the projects that you would be presenting to use this funding for.
Okay, I haven't got that by yet.
Okay.
What I was asking was any of those projects that we were looking at, the sidewalk, the handicap park, or access to the beach for handicap, was any of that in the five hundred? You answered that, there was no.
Correct.
So we have some of that considered, we now, we'll sit down, the committee and I, and see if we can come up with what we have this.
So if we, if we approve.
And we can get you out of there.
If we approve the, they're ready to go, that'll leave you roughly thirty-four thousand dollars to work with, okay? I mean, that's really what we're doing, so, and then you can spend it. You have to come back.
Wait, 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 wait. Let's pump the brakes.
At least you have a framework.
There were some items in there that we tried to overlap with, like picnic tables or other items that we spread around the town, which were also included.
Okay.
Across the street, so.
But we'll leave it up to you, at least this way you'll have a framework, thirty-four thousand, whatever, whatever you can fit in will work, okay.
So I just want to make sure that, you know, when I walk away and I talk to people that we've talked to about being in place.
Yep.
Am I okay to say?
Yeah, I have to submit this to the state, and I'll be in touch with you as soon as I get approval from them.
Any idea on timeframe on that?
They're turning things around pretty quick, I'll get it submitted tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
And as soon as I hear back, I'll let you know.
Okay, great, great.
Will, will they give you a problem if the other half, the rest of it isn't submitted, or you can submit it over?
Twenty-seven, eight twenty-seven.
Yeah, they're just, they'll just release whatever we've submitted for.
So at least don't be there.
There's no penalty, because, oh, you're only asking for this, and you don't need to ask all, okay, because I figure we're going to take another, another week to get these numbers down, chasing sunny numbers, down the board grant, there's, it's supposed to be emergency, so they can't collide, not before Lincoln Street, there's a lot of other things that we just seem to struggle and get numbers.
Okay.
So that, if we got another week, think we can.
Yep.
Probably clean that up, so.
I do like the idea.
Get numbers by some, sometime next week before I have.
Sure, if you send it to me, then I'll pass them to the board.
I do like the idea of picnic tables you brought up, Mike, because I helped Tommy move them for the, for the fireworks, and some of them are in really rough shape, so I think some new picnic tables would go along with that.
You know, highwayers should make them, you know.
Key word there.
Talk to the high school.
Yeah, there you go.
Silver leg.
Oh, yeah, I think you need to help bring them back, so.
Sure, I got a truck, let's go.
I got a backhoe.
Any, any other discussion on, so what we'll do is I'll make a motion that we approve the projects submitted by the youth and recreation for the, whatever the sponsor's called, I'm not sure.
Earmark phone.
Earmark phones.
That's the second.
All right, so any other discussion on, on this or on that? All right, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, guys.
So we're moving ahead.
Thanks for all your work.
Okay.
I'll, I'll be in touch with you as soon as I hear back from them, and then just, yeah, we'll, we'll be in touch, thanks.
Okay, so we are down now to just two more.
Two more updates.
On Morse Brothers and training for boards and committees.
Yeah, why don't we do those first, and then we'll do the one.
Let's get through this, and then we'll do the one, I forgot about that, you're right. Okay, so Morse Brothers, any updates?
No significant updates, they did notify us that they would be moving a second pile of dirt with two trucks, they would be avoiding the school bus schedule, we obviously have had various discussions with council and engineers, we brought in our water commissioners, water superintendent, to make sure that there was no negative impact on the water, we've been assured by everybody involved that there is not, and at this point, they're not digging anything further, they're moving the piles that were already dug up ultimately, and they're operating under the agricultural exemption, as they've explained to, to us. They expect it to take, it should be done by the end of next week, moving that pile. And just one thing to note too, this is a separate project from what they had submitted for last year and then withdrawn, that was to redo their entire bogs, that's not what this project is, this is simply them moving a lone pile from the location in Halifax to a couple of their other bogs in various communities.
And that's what you and I saw when we talked about.
Exactly, yes.
All right, training boards, for boards and committees?
No new significant updates, we've held a couple of trainings, we had some open meeting law training that various town departments attended together here, it was beneficial, and we have a new ethics training that has been sent out by the state that's all online now, so that should be easier for people to obtain, and we continue to look for opportunities to train our staff and boards and committees.
That's putting an emphasis on our volunteer boards.
We are working, yeah, we're still working on that.
Okay, so that concludes, I think, everything on our agenda, except for a couple of detective sessions at the end of the night, and also.
The warrant.
And the warrant, so I have two copies here, it's the same thing.
Oh, you have cameras. Do you have one?
Somebody got a what?
Copy of the warrant, do you have one, Dan?
No, I got it right here in my eye.
We have an extra. We have an extra.
You can have one.
An extra?
There's an extra one. That's just from Steele.
So, you know, the board had closed the warrant previously, we've worked together collectively as a team within Town Hall to put together the warrant, thank you to Sandy, who's been excellent, Pam has been excellent, it really, you know, this is, although it's both. It really, you know, this is, although it's both, although it's.
You can't close the door.
Yeah.
You can't close the door. We can.
No, 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 no.
Close the door, and we can leave the door open, just move down the hall.
Let everyone get out.
You don't have to go home, but you can't stay here.
We're going to get open.
Especially you.
Violations, complaints, and we will.
Oh, yes, we will.
Always.
So, just to give the board an update on the process, you know, the warrant, while it happens annually, it's a lot of work. It really takes the staff a lot of time, so I just want to thank you to everybody in Town Hall that has contributed to this, you know, not only the warrant, but the budget. You know, budget season starts, budget season really never ends. It's an ongoing process, but Sandy started, you know, that process, worked with all of our departments, then we collectively worked with the finance committee to recommend a balanced budget, so, and we have a very light town meeting warrant compared to past years. So, we have a total of twenty-six articles. There's a couple of small things that we're going to do a little bit different this year just to make it more efficient, but we'll go through each of the articles quickly, and at the end, you can vote to kind of approve the warrant. So.
You don't have to do that, I don't think.
You don't have to, it's a good practice, because the warrant is technically, the board is the one submitting the warrant. So, town meetings held May 8th this year at six-thirty. It's only an annual town meeting. We do not have a special town meeting. And then the election will be Saturday, May 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Many of the articles are housekeeping, annual articles, but, you know, we'll start. Article one is just to hear and act on the reports of town officers and committees. That's an annual article. Article two is the amendments to the wage and personnel bylaw. So, these are just the items that you, the finance committee, had recommended a change, which was the call firefighter, EMT, step four, the geriatric nurse, and the assistant outreach worker amend their wages, and then to change the classification of the police lieutenant slash deputy chief from a fourteen to an unclassified.
As far as the budget itself, which would be, I think, usually.
Article four.
Article four.
No, it's okay. Article three is, sets the salaries of elected officials. No significant changes here. Typically, this follows any across-the-board increase to wage and personnel, which we do not have yet. The only change is the town clerk right now. Her salary, or that position's salary, is based on a thirty-two-hour work week. We've learned, you know, in the past few years, this, the requirements of the town clerk and the town clerk's office have greatly expanded. You need a forty-hour-a-week town clerk, so the request for the increase here is just to compensate that position for forty hours a week. That's really the only change in the elected officials' salaries. Article four is our operating budget. I'm not going to go line by line. I will point out a couple of our major expense increases or changes. So, one of the first changes is, we are recommending a part-time conservation agent. You're seeing, you know, most communities have a conservation agent. It's a professional position. We rely on our conservation commission, which is, you know, a group of volunteers, but the Wetlands Protection Act and our bylaws are very diverse, and they require a professional who really understands this. If we get a call for enforcement, we're really limited in who can go out and make that assessment. You know, we appreciate what our volunteer boards do, but sometimes you need someone who's a professional in this, and this was a recommendation of the conservation commission. Let's see, what else? Our police wages, there's a significant increase there for two reasons. One of them being, we are looking to add a police lieutenant slash deputy chief, and the other one is, we have a longtime police sergeant who will be retiring in the coming fiscal year, and we have to pay a buyout for sick time, vacation time, so it's a significant cost to the town in that area.
You just take that in wages, even though it's, oh, I guess it's.
Yeah, it's a wage lag. The schools came in and did a presentation. Overall, they're, for all of the schools, we're at two-point-nine percent, I believe, or two-point-five-four percent, and the elementary school is at a five percent increase in their cost. We've had discussions with the schools to voice our concerns that we cannot continue to sustain large increases like this. The special needs tuitions is being supplemented by circuit breaker funding from the state, so while it was technically a decrease to the town this year, there's no guarantee that that continues because that is being offset by state funding. So, it's something we're aware of, and we're keeping our eyes on because that could change in the future.
Is that tuition, it's less this year than last year, is that?
Because they're using that, that funding from the state, the supplemental funding. So, the number itself is actually higher, but we're not paying it because they're using circuit breaker funding to supplement what we would.
Okay.
Let's see, just.
Silver Lake doesn't look that bad, actually.
The assessment itself from Silver Lake was not. It was a.
Only about forty thousand.
Yeah, minimal increase there, but the largest one was the elementary school cost increase. Like I said, it was over five percent. So, we are aware of it. We're going to continue to work through the schools to try to make sure that that's a reasonable figure in the future. And, you know, other than really expense increases with inflation, the, you know, we had significant increases in our county retirement contribution. Our youth insurance went up a little over four percent, and our general insurance was around a six percent increase, and these are costs we really have no control over. We were able to increase our OPEB trust contribution. So, this is, we have a financial policy that will increase the contribution to our OPEB trust by five thousand dollars every year, and we were able to do that this year, which is positive. So, last year, we contributed thirty-nine thousand. This year, we will be contributing forty-four thousand, and that's to fund our other post-employment benefits, so of retirees, and that's primarily health insurance of retirees.
Okay.
And so, we have a total operating budget of twenty-eight million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars for this year.
One million more than last year.
It is, it's a significant increase compared to last year. And I think you'll see, this doesn't include any wage increases, this number itself, and for the most part, level service with the small exceptions that I mentioned, with the part-time conservation agent, which was a twenty-eight thousand dollar increase, and then the police lieutenant. Other than those items, we really are level servicing.
Can I just make a point, though, that in terms of wage increases on the wage and personnel article four, that's.
We're going to address that in a future article.
Has not been addressed yet.
Yeah, I have an article in here, I'll get to that.
Okay, all right. I was trying to get clear, because I know there's been some concern that we are level funding salaries, which we don't intend to do.
No, right, well, I will address that. Article five, this is another annual housekeeping article. This sets the maximum amount that can be spent during the fiscal year of all of our revolving funds. This is unchanged from last year. Article six, this is another annual article. It's an appropriation to our reserve fund, so seventy-five thousand dollars, and then fifty thousand dollars to the water department reserve fund. This is for emergency and unforeseen circumstances that come up during the year. This would be, this funding would be utilized for that.
Taking general revenue into the water department, don't they have their own revenue?
We're not. It's funded by the water department.
Yeah. I think it's, the fifty thousand, it's funded by the water.
Oh, it says available funds, so you're going to make a motion, it'll be from water revenue.
Through the check during.
Correct, yeah. Article seven is, this would approve the water treatment plant upgrades, the YMCA and Richmond Park locations. These are upgrades that need to be done. We are being held by the EPA to upgrade these facilities and bring them into compliance. There is not a figure in here, because we are out to bid right now, actually. The bids just came in, so we'll have the hard number for town meeting, but this would be to authorize us to move forward with that. And that would be a borrowing, that would be paid for by the water, the water department. So, no, you know, water department is, you know, self-funding, so that would be, they'd pay for it themselves. The ratepayers would ultimately end up paying for the upgrades, because they're the ones that use the service. Article eight is an appropriation of two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars to fund the provisions of collective bargaining agreements and wage and personnel amendments, so this is what you had touched on earlier, John. So, while we haven't settled many of our contracts or agreed to a across-the-board increase for wage and personnel, we do anticipate that coming, likely after town meeting, so in order for us to be prepared, we are putting some funding aside so we can allow for those.
So, how does that work if we don't amend it, if we call town meeting without changing article four, but we've approved article eight? How does that work?
So, the amendment to the wage and personnel would have to go back, because that would be amending the bylaw. They wouldn't need to appropriate the funding, they would just need to amend the bylaw. For our collective bargaining agreements, the funding would already be there, so it would be just the board approving the agreement.
On the contracts?
On the collective bargaining.
What about the wage and personnel end? We would have to hold another meeting or the town meeting?
Correct. It could, it could be done, if we had a special town meeting, it could be done. If not, it would be done at the annual town meeting next year, and we would have the funding aside. You know, it would be more work, obviously, for our team in Town Hall, but it would be retro, because we have, we have the money, but this would be putting the money aside.
Right, but we would have, it'd be a whole year before people got raised.
But it'd be retroactive if they, if they did. Nobody's losing out.
I don't know.
I see what you're saying.
I get what you're saying, you know, we have to wait a year. We're working as quickly as we can.
I would say, if we're at a position in May that we can't pull a trigger on it, that we really should have a September town meeting, and we need to do it by then. Because I don't think it's fair to have every employee in town wait around until we get around to give them whatever the increase would be. I just don't like that idea, and I don't think it's the right thing to do. Yes, man?
Kathleen Berry, thirty-four Highland Circle. I don't know if you remember, at our last town meeting where we talked about budgets, there was a lot of controversy about retroactively paying somebody who had left their position. And that's my biggest fear, is if we do delay and we have this discussion about paying retroactively, that someone might feel slighted if they're not given their wages upfront or when they're due.
Yeah, I could see, I could see a year could run into some sort of a, a bit of a complication there. But I think just on the basic management process, for lack of the, I can't think fast enough here to say what I want to say, but for something like that, it seems to me that it's just not right that we should say, just wait, just wait, just wait.
I agree. This is why we need a policy that sets our wages rather than a town meeting bylaw.
A hundred percent, and we really have, next year, we've got to get that fixed, because this wage and personnel thing is just so archaic.
We're still fixing, fixing the kinks.
The only one that gets it, the old man farmer over here, and that's the one that thinks it's a good idea.
No, I don't think it's a good idea. I wanted to go through it.
Personally, if we can't, if we can't put this together for May, then I would say we definitely have to go later than, like, the first week of September and say, it's not unusual, in the past, if towns have done this, they'll hold, sometimes they'll do a whole annual town meeting and everything button numbers, right? And then do a September because the fiscal year has happened, and you have the budgets and all that other stuff. My own way of thinking about it, I just don't like that, holding on until four years.
Yeah, we can cross the bridge when we get to it. Unfortunately, it's not something we can decide now, but if, you know, when that time comes.
That's my view, Warren.
That's something the board can always call for a special time.
Yeah. It's like what happened.
Article nine is one of those changes I had touched upon. So, in the past, every capital item was its separate, one separate article. This year, the finance committee recommended a capital plan, and so the plan is one article. It lists all of the capital items that were recommended. Just to quickly go through them, in the highway department, we have road maintenance for three hundred thousand dollars and a wheeled excavator for a hundred and fifty thousand and eighty dollars. Municipal maintenance, we had ADA compliance projects for five hundred thousand. Town hall portico repair for fifty thousand. Library window replacement for forty-five thousand. In the fire department, we got a fire command vehicle for eighty thousand, and motorola minotaur pages for four thousand, five hundred and seventy-six. In the police department, we had two police cruisers for a hundred and ten thousand, bulletproof vests for five thousand, portable radios for fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine. And then in accounting, we had the GASB study for seventy-three hundred dollars. And that's comprised of the capital plan. This will be held very similar to the budget, where go through, go over, read over each item. If somebody has a hold, you hold on that, you go back, and so on and so forth.
So, in years past, when we dealt with police cruisers, we would be replacing cruisers, we're not adding to.
No, this is part of the regular replacement cycle.
The article always said that we would dispose of the ex-police car or something like that. How are we handling it this time? I'm sure that question will come up.
Yeah, and we can answer the question, but that, we don't need town meeting approval to dispose of police cars, so we can mention that, you know, when the question comes up, but it's not something that needs to be in the article or the motion.
Well, I think we need to be clear with the police department then, that we're not, that this is not, we're not adding to.
They're aware, yeah. Chief Shaws is aware that this is like every other year, his regular replacement cycle.
The same question on the fire command vehicle, is that a new vehicle?
It would be a new vehicle, and the idea is that we're in need of a new brush truck, and she with him's chief's truck, it fits the mold of the brush truck, so it's cheaper to basically buy a command vehicle, that would become the chief's vehicle, and the current chief's vehicle would be transferred over to the brush truck. Instead of a hundred and twenty thousand for a new brush truck, we're able to do this to the tune of eighty thousand dollars.
So, we need to retrofit on the present car, though?
Yeah, but most, the equipment that's on the existing.
Plug and play, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, just swap.
All the equipment on the existing brush truck can just be transferred right over to.
The highway department will do that?
Most of the time, yeah.
Okay.
Article ten, this is eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for the assessors' recertification account. This is an annual article. Article eleven is thirty-five hundred dollars to the self-coastal county's legal services. They provide free legal services in civil matters to elders and low-income their children. Another annual article. Article twelve is thirty-five hundred dollars to the self-shore resource and advocacy center for domestic violence intervention and prevention services. That's also an annual article. Article thirteen is an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars to support a part-time school resource officer at Silver Lake Middle School. That has been, that's another annual article.
Is that a, something we've done in the past?
It is. We do it every year.
And what if we say no? No, because the Silver Lake has the voting.
The first year, we said no. Clifton funded a third of the officer, so he was only there for a third of the time. Kingston provides the, the school resource officer for the high school.
The high school, we do the middle.
So.
Each one of them have a resource officer.
We have ourselves, resource officer for the middle school. This has been an article for the last three years. It failed the first year, it passed the next two years, so.
Okay. Is this a Kingston policeman that we're supporting?
A Kingston policeman.
Yeah. It's either.
We tried to get them to put it in the budget, but that's.
How about the school voting?
The Kingston town budget.
No.
It wasn't the same category.
Dunny and Allen.
Article fourteen, this is an article of currently two-hundred-and-two thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents to replace two rooftop units at Silver Lake. We have been informed that this will be an amendment on the town meeting floor, because they will only be moving forward with one unit, but that's not an official change yet. The school committee has to vote that change, so that'll be an amendment at town meeting. Article fifteen, this is another annual article. It transfers a hundred and fifty dollars for the use of the trustees for county cooperative extension services. Article 16, so this is a capital article. The reason that this is separate from the capital plan is because this was not recommended by the finance committee. And this is for $69,500 for the replacement of a wood chipper in the highway department.
So if the highway surveyor is successful, we can afford it, we can pay it?
We can. It would end up being a reduction in an appropriation to our stabilization fund, which I'll get to in a minute. But we can't afford it. It would reduce what we could put into our stabilization fund, though. Article 17 is exactly that, an appropriation to our stabilization fund. So towns have, it's basically an emergency fund, a stabilization fund. It's good practice to, you know, keep that at, you know, seven and a half percent is a good number. We don't have a dedicated financial policy. The finance committee will be working on that. But we're, I think, under 4% right now, so we want to try to bolster that stabilization fund. So basically, whatever we have left in free cash, we will appropriate to the stabilization fund. So we don't have a figure in here because it's dependent on whether the Article four, the wood chipper, gets approved or not.
Is that the only thing?
That it's dependent upon at this point, yes.
So we do a lottery for our articles?
Yes. There is a note in the beginning of the warrant that if there's an article that is tied, then we would have to do.
Do that together. My ring is going to do that, or we have to talk to him about it?
When we have that meeting, we'll discuss that with him. Article 18, so Article 18 and 19 go together. But as part of, the Massachusetts Attorney General had sued the opioid, it was the opioid settlement, had sued drug companies as a result of the opioid crisis. And funding has been allocated to all of the cities and towns across the state. The way the state law is right now, that funding comes into our general fund, and it's in our general fund, but we can only use it for very specific purposes set by the state. So in order for us to put that money aside, we need to create, at this point, legislation may change in the future, but right now, we need to create, it would be the opioid settlement stabilization fund. So it's a special purpose stabilization fund. So Article 18 is just to create the account basically itself. Article 19 is to actually put the money, transfer the money that we've received into that account, and we'll have the figure at town meeting for that. But it's actually quite significant, several hundred thousand dollars.
And what can we do with it? And it's earmarked to certain things, though?
It's very specific things, basically in relation to the opioid crisis, fighting opioid abuse.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Hundreds of.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars for Halifax to do that.
Exactly. I mean, we don't know what we're going to do. We haven't discussed it. We may team up with other communities, maybe a regional thing, we're not sure. But we have to at least put the money aside.
Oh, I get it. I'm just saying, that's a high amount of money for a very limited purpose.
Right. Yeah, you have to see what you can use it on, see what you can.
Can be married a doctor.
Maybe. It's something, you know, we need to assess what.
Do something useful.
You know, a lot of towns haven't utilized it yet, so we'll wait and see, you know, what the options are. The state will continue to come out with guidance on how we can use that. Article 20 is, like similar articles in the past, it would give the Board of Selectmen through the Board of Assessors the permission to negotiate a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, between the town and River Street Associates for 115 River Street.
Didn't this come up before?
This was a different property, different property. So this would be just.
On River Street?
Yes. This would just be the authority to negotiate it. And that's 115 River Street. Article 21 is probably what you're thinking of. This is approval of the pilot that was previously authorization it's giving. This was, is really a housekeeping article. This town meeting already gave the authorization to the Board of Selectmen through the Board of Assessors, and that was negotiated for 107 River Street to the tune of $83,000 per year. And this is just more of an affirmation on that. Article 22, this is, in order, it would allow the board to lease the Hemlock Lane landfill for the purposes of solar. Jerry Joy had been in here previously to discuss this with you, so this is something that would need town meeting approval, to lease the land for up to 30 years. Article 23, this is a petitioned article to increase the size of the Board of Selectmen from three members to five members. Article 24 is another petitioned article to change the town clerk, treasurer, collector, and highway surveyor from elected to appointed. Article 25 is another citizens petition, which would give the police chief, the strong chief provisions of Massachusetts general law. So similar to the fire chief, he would become a strong chief. And Article 26 is just the different positions that are up for election on May 13th from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m.
On 23, or 20, 23 and 24. We have a hold on 23 and 24?
Turn the page.
But the question is, these are, you and I talked about it before the meeting, but these also require a town meeting vote?
So they require a town meeting vote, and then they would require approval of the election?
Unless, but they're not on this year's election?
They would not be on this year's election.
Could be to put it on a future ballot initiative, ballot question.
Earliest it could be would be, is that to be an annual election? I guess it would because we were not going to call it otherwise. So the earliest it could be followed through with would be May of 2024.
Would be the election, yes.
And then it would go to the state? And then maybe by the September, it would be allowed, but then it wouldn't go into effect, would it? How would it go into effect?
It would likely go into effect at the next election. Well, for the changing of the size of the board, it would be the next election after it were approved, because then the additional board members would have to be voted in.
So it would be, earliest would be 2025?
Yeah, potentially.
Okay. And then same on the appointments? Well, when their appointments have run out, whoever they are?
Yeah, so that would change. If all approved, it would be when the appointments ran out. It wouldn't, you know, so if someone were elected, for instance, the highway surveyor is a three-year appointment or term. That's up this year. That would be through 2026. So even if this were to change, they'd finish out their term before the change were to occur.
What I would suggest is that you guys have some kind of a plan in mind, like explaining that we wouldn't be displacing anyone, they would fill, finish their term, and then that position would be appointed after that.
If it was approved.
Right, if it's approved, and if it gets approved on the ballot. Because people might feel, oh, yeah, if I kick them out of office or something like that. Also have a plan on how are you going to appoint someone? Now, you take great care when you appoint your fire chief, police chief, or we appointed Cody, we had a subcommittee who, you know, looked through the resumes and then came up with candidates. Something of that idea is great because then they're not thinking, you guys just pick your favorite person.
So, yeah, I mean, I think.
Because all those positions are high-level positions.
I'm not, I'm just not, I'm not really in favor of them for those reasons. Like, I just don't, A, I don't like doing things haphazardly like this. I mean, I think if we're going to make significant changes in government, which is what these are, that we ought to do, so we ought to have a plan. If this is our plan, this is how we're going to do it, everybody agrees to it and moves on that way. Because there's too many questions like that, like, you know, is this going to be kind of haphazardly done? Or are we going to have some sort of process? How do you be fair about it without being, because right now, they're elected positions, for example.
So they're popularity contests. So they're popularity contests.
Well, they're popularity contests, it's true. However, once they're elected, they are in office, and we can't get rid of them unless you do a recall, right? That's the only way out. And that happens very infrequently, and it's difficult. But if we appoint them, if, are they going to be employees? Are they going to be contract people? I mean, if we appoint a clerk, it's an employee, so.
No, contract employee.
I don't know that we can make contracts with them.
I mean, there's some you could. I wouldn't recommend it. You know, I recommend you do it as their employees of the town. You make the initial appointment, and they become employees of the town. You know, they'd be treated just like any other employee and subject to disciplinary action.
It would be similar to the town accountant position. By the town accountant position, you can have a contract. I've never had one, but can have a contract as a town accountant. I think that they hope that the state changed some of the laws, and some of those positions are now able to have contracts. My suggestion is that you guys do think it through. Do talk about it, and have a plan if this does pass.
I think, I mean, I think in the long run, that all of those positions, the clerk, the highway surveyor, and the treasurer, and the accountant, those are technical positions. Not, you know, in the old days, the clerk could have been anybody, you know, just coming in, accounting balance, and didn't take that much trouble. But that's changed. I mean, it's a whole.
All of those positions have changed.
They're all very technical, they're all very specialized, they all require people with certain.
Knowledge of what position you're in.
And knowledge and so on. So I think, I do think they ultimately need to go away from the elections, but I'm just not convinced that this is a good way to do it. It just seems like it's like, all right, it's kind of like.
Just sudden, just real sudden.
I just don't like the idea. And I honestly do not see the point in raising the number of members on the Board of Selectmen. I mean, nobody has ever told me what's the difference. Like, why stop at five? Why not have seven? Why not have nine? Why not have a dozen? It doesn't, five, three, what's, what's the increase going to do other than prolong, I think, some decision-making? I mean, really, what my view of Board of Selectmen does is kind of administer things in between town meetings. That's what we're really meant. Historically, that's why we have a select board. And I don't see how it gets any more efficient by increasing the size. I just don't see it. So, those are my views.
Good views.
Yeah, they're decent views.
And it's not, it's not, I mean, honestly, by the time these things go into effect, I'm sure I'll still be here.
No, no, you're right.
Regardless, it's just, it's just like, I wish we would think these things, like the people that propose in these things should, I think we should have, they should come and say, look, we think these are the changes that should be made. All right, well, let's see how we're going to go about doing that. Because I don't disagree with them, except for the five minutes.
I do believe that if this was not a petition article, that it would probably be an article on next year's annual town meeting. Because it is a long time in coming, because a lot of us want to know if these positions should have been appointed. Oh, wow, we tried several years back, and it passed at town meeting and failed on the ballot.
Oh, on which one? On the?
Treasurer collector.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Was it, do you remember the results, Sandy? Was it close, or?
I think it was a close vote at town meeting, but it passed. But I don't know, I don't remember the ballot.
I think I remember.
I just remember that it lost.
I think I remember a big fight about the, like, the tree warden. And that was an elected position, right? But no one ever ran for it, and then somebody get written in, but, you know, people would stand up and say, no, take away my right to vote, that kind of thing, so.
That is, that is one of the biggest documents, is you are taking away our right to vote for these positions.
And it's.
It's a, it's a delicate balance.
It really is. But I do think it would be more sense for us, which is something that we're working on anyway, is a kind of an overhaul of our government, which is really in desperate need of that.
A long time, a long time coming.
And then after that, it's all the rest of this stuff has to fall in line. Because right now, we're still doing things like.
We're digging out of the archaic age, just trying to.
I mean, we should get to the 20th century?
At least, at least.
I don't know. It's so far behind.
Let me send a carrier pigeon. We'll get some air conditioning, maybe?
Carriage parked outside with a horse.
Get some air conditioning that works, you know?
Okay, so we can approve this as, you would have to agree with it all, right?
No, you're just approving the warrant, you know, before the town meeting.
Typically, what we used to do in the past, I assume that's what this board would want to do, is we kind of divide up the articles amongst ourselves in terms of who might speak to it if we're going to. We're not on that yet, we still have time, we can do it in the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll go through, and we can ignore who would speak to it and your recommendations at the next meeting.
Cody can, as a department head, he has an absolute right to speak at town meeting, and so I'm assuming you're doing a lot of that. But I also feel like as members of the Board of Selectmen, it's our responsibility, if we're going to, if we take a position on something, that we should, we should explain why.
What the position is.
Sure.
And I'm excited, too. I think we're going to do a town warrant preview. So Cody and myself are going to sit down and we'll have a, we'll have a video for the public, or essentially, basically just do what we just did here, and try to proactively educate people before the meeting, spell out all the articles so that instead of people frantically trying to understand things.
During while we're talking about them.
Right. They'll actually have some time to do a little bit of homework.
Is there any way we can use that big screen TV at town meeting and like broadcast warrant articles for the public to see? Can we do that? I would love to try that this morning, because I think.
Isn't there a projector in there? It's even bigger.
They'll have to move it over.
Oh, yeah, that would be behind us, wouldn't it?
Big screen TV, the one we have.
Well, we're going to make it as accessible as we can, with screens and TVs, whatever we can do. We're going to do as much as we can.
I would love to do that.
Big font, big font.
It's a helpful thing to have the visual there. Everybody has a book, anyway, but the visual there, I think, will tie things together. I would think it would be a plus for us to do. And plus, again, this is getting close to the modern days, anyway. Were that TVs for how long now?
Flatback or the big back? Where are we, where are we going?
I remember black.
Plasma. I was going to say, are they going to be color? Plasma HD. Are we getting to 4K yet?
Black and white in three stations, and the remote control.
No remote.
Remote control was the youngest of the family who said, get up and change.
My father would call me in from outside. Jonathan, come here. Put on your phone. 400-pound TVs that support the floor. More Joyce.
So you'd want to vote to approve the warrant.
We approve the warrant as.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Hi. Oh, cheers.
Just executive session.
All right, so. Kathleen Berry, 34 Highland Circle, official. I have been doing, just looking at dates for meetings and such on the town website, and it seems as though the website's not being updated yet. There's a lot of old, old information, including who's on committees, when meetings are happening. In fact, on the homepage right now, it says that it's information about March. And so I'm wondering if there is somebody whose position it is to actively update the website for the town and make sure that it has accurate information. In fact, the town meeting is not even on the calendar right now.
Because we have to approve the warrant before we can put it on the calendar. It's, it is actively updated. The information under news and announcements is more, basically, the way the website's set up is if we delete what's there, even older stuff pops up. So your only way for it to not be, to have the most, you just add information. So as we have information to add, we add it. But we're working on making sure we're keeping the website updated. And all of our meetings are on there, they have to be legally.
So does somebody from each of the committees control what's on those pages?